Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting to order. And I have a motion moved by Councilor Tadman, seconded by Councilor LeBlanc, that the Committee of the Whole approved the April 10, 2019 budget meeting agenda as presented. And do we have any declarations of community interest? Mayor, go first.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. If there's any discussion with regard to the Hilton Cemetery, I am a member of the Board of Trinity St. Andrews United Church, which is the owner and operator of the Hilton Cemetery.
Okay, thank you. And Councilor Rowley?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. If there's any discussion regarding the Presskill Point Light House Preservation Society, I will recuse myself, as I am a member of their board.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. And we have no delegations? I don't think we have any citizens' comments? No. Staff report. Lynda, did you want to? I don't think at the last meeting we made any changes, but you've just handed out a sheet. If you wanted to go over that briefly and let us know where we're at, that would be great.
So at the last meeting, you made one change. You added transfer from the contingency for sidewalk maintenance of $80,000. At the end of that meeting, you were at 6.84% tax increase for municipal. And at that point, we didn't have any indication, but we had an indication of the county's budget being passed, but we didn't have their tax rates. I now have their preliminary tax rates, the proposed tax rates. I'm not sure that they've gone through county council yet, but I've used them in our calculations. And then late last night, we also received the education rate, and it's decreased from .0017 to .00161, which is creating some tax room for this council to consider. And at this point, the blended increase is 3.45%. There are two items included in that number that were discussed at the last meeting, but there was no consensus that I am aware of. One of the items that you were discussing was $80,000 for future staff positions for 2019. And the other was perhaps taking $76,000 from Urban Infrastructure Reserve Fund for our traffic lights and our streetlights for $76,000. So that takes us to a 6.89% increase. When we look at the table below, using the actual tax levy, it comes out at 6.77, and that's just rounding.
So those two items have been included, those two changes have been included. So the transfer from contingency as well for the first item that you talked about, right? That's included in these numbers as well?
Yes.
And staffing and the urban infrastructure, right?
For the traffic lights, correct.
Yep, for the $76,000, sorry. Okay, any questions for Lynda at this time? Go ahead. Councilor Tadman?
Well, with the 17.5 put in that, well, the majority voted for last Monday night.
I believe that was in already. Bay of Quinte was already in there?
Seventeen thousand, four hundred dollars for the Bay of Quinte marketing?
Yes.
Yes.
It's still in.
Yep. Any other questions at this time for Lynda? Or any other staff at this time? Go ahead, Councilor LeBlanc.
Through you, Deputy Mayor, for Lynda. I see you gave us another sheet, April 10, and I have the other one in front of me. Our mill rate, our increased mill rate is 3.4. A house of 250,000, 256,000 is 3.45. In our other sheet, it was 4.87. So when you say with the reduction from the county and from the hospital, if we kept everything in that's in there right now, including what you've just said, that we agreed to, our mill rate would go from 4.87 to 3.45 for 250,000.
That would be the impact to the taxpayer, the total impact?
That's total, that's all of us combined.
Yes.
Okay. Just want to know that.
Any other questions of clarification right now before we deliberate? Go ahead, Councilor Tadman.
Couldn't Ms. Whitfield just tell us what the tax increase is at the moment? I heard you say it, but would you just repeat it? The blended?
The blended rate at the moment, or the blended tax increase is 3.45%. That's on the sheet I just gave you?
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, so next on our agenda, we have public comments. Are there any people here tonight that would like to make any comments on the budget? Okay, thank you. Okay, so we're going to move into budget deliberations. We did a lot of talking last time, and we went up and down. And so tonight, let's see whether we can finish this off and come to a conclusion. Right now, we're at 3.45. That includes a few of the changes that we made. Is there anyone who wants to start off with any comment suggestions or an A-OK? Go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. With regard to the consideration to add $80,000 for potential staffing into the budget, I would note that we're in April now. By the time, primarily, our vacancies are in the planning department. By the time we hire a planner and have the planner hire his or her team, we're going to be into the fall. And I'm going to suggest that in terms of staffing costs or staffing budget, there would be a good $80,000 available to us, keeping in mind we'd have to then budget for it in future years. But also, I'm anticipating that we'll have something of a surplus coming out of 2018 that we may be able to tap into as well. So if it's council's wish, or the committee's wish, I would suggest maybe perhaps we remove that $80,000 for potential staffing.
So your suggestion is that because we aren't going to be doing the hiring until later, we're already going to have a surplus in there? Is that basically what you're saying?
Essentially, yes.
We're already going to have some savings that we can use?
That's right.
Okay. Go ahead, Councilor Anderson.
I thought it was a good idea, and I think, still think it's a good idea, because in light of what we were looking at tonight, it might be even a better idea. But our CAO wants to finish his study and evaluation, and I believe it is only fair to have that there. I know you're looking at having some extra 1% or something set aside for extra funds for next year. This could be those extra funds if nothing happens. But I think we should be prepared. I think there's a lot of staffing to be still dealt with, and timing, I know timing is what it is. But I think we should set aside that money and be, and our CAO knows it's there, he can work with it, so.
So you're saying it's a good idea to leave it? Is that what you're saying?
Absolutely, I think so.
So I think basically, there are a number of positions that we already have money set aside for. These are a couple additional positions that we don't have on our org chart, so they would be an addition. But what Mayor is saying is that we most likely will have that money available anyway because our staffing hiring won't be happening for a little while. So it may not be necessary to put it in. I think that's kind of what we're getting at.
I still think those are predictions, and we haven't heard from the CAO yet on his report, so.
Okay, so you're thinking we should leave it in?
I think so.
Councilor Bateman, go ahead.
On the $80,000, I agree with the Mayor. To set it aside now, Mr. Casman, the CAO is going to do a comprehensive review of the money set aside. After he's done the review, he might decide we need more, we need less, just $80,000 there on a hope and a prayer, let's wait until we need it, because we might not need it. I don't think it's necessary right now until Mr. Casman has done what he has to do. And that's not going to be, like the Mayor said, within our timeframe here.
Any other thoughts on this side, whether we should keep it or leave it? Councilor LeBlanc, and then Councilor Rowley?
This $80,000, is it coming out of reserves?
No.
Through you, Deputy Mayor, too?
No, it's not.
It's an extra tax increase, right?
Yes.
Okay.
By taking it out, we will lower the increase?
The thing is, is that we have a deliberation, so in this, right now, we're going to be going through an official plan amendment. We're going to be hiring a new planner, is going to have to bring in staff to get up to speed and to get our official plan done. We probably should look at keeping somebody that's senior, that's moving here, somebody like Darryl. I know what he's done in June, which would probably extend him to get this official plan work to help the new planner get his feet wet and going. Because they're not going to hit the ground rolling, knowing everything and how this town works and everything. Which would also, you could use that for staffing there. If you're going to get rid of that person and get rid of the foreman, you don't want to start doing all these roads that you can't supervise. So maybe we should cut half the roads that we're preparing to do and get rid of them too, at the same time, if we're not going to have that there. And to get that, so let's go to a budget of, let's get rid of half the roads, let's get a half of the half of the stuff. Because you're not going to have the people to do it and achieve it. So we're not going to look that good if we're going to put all these roads, and it's not going to get done. So if you want to start cutting, let's start cutting. I'm prepared to cut, if it's not going to happen. Okay, thank you.
Councilor Rowley, and then Mayor can comment.
I guess maybe I share some of the concerns with Councilor LeBlanc. If we, I guess my question is, how will this affect some of the projects that we have kind of budgeted for? I'm thinking specifically with Public Works. I know planning, that's right, we do need some, we also need some, a management position in Public Works. And if we wait till the end of summer, this is our roadwork season coming up, right? So I'm just wondering how that will, as Councilor LeBlanc said, how will that affect the projects that Public Works has committed to accomplish this year?
Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So a couple of comments. With regard to the planner position, I know that staff, our senior staff are interviewing this week, is that tomorrow? And I also know that senior staff have asked, what's the name of Darryl's company? Landmark, to continue on past the June date. I don't know what the response has been, but I would anticipate a positive response. Darryl's been very kind to Brighton. And with regard to cutting roads, I'll just remind Council that we have moved, we've asked staff to tender all the roads projects, so that is happening. The $80,000 that we plugged into the budget, or that we were discussing and have asked, and has been plugged into the budget, are for phantom positions. Yes, we've received policy consideration in the budget book for that, but what we don't have is the CAO's stamp of approval. What we don't have is the CAO's recommendation to Council about what those positions really look like. So we don't know if it'll be a foreman, for a person, whatever we say today. We don't know if it'll be a records management person, or what that $80,000 may spend. We don't know if the CAO frankly will have time with all the vacant positions in the municipality today that need to be filled, to even get to this org review until the fall. So we don't know what that $80,000 will be. And my suggestion is, given the fact that there are vacant positions that are unlikely to be filled, at least until June or July or August or later, that we will have budgeted for those positions. So there will be at least $80,000 in the budget unspent on staffing costs, available to Council, to spend on staffing, future staffing, if that's what we want to do. But it's entirely up to Council.
I'm just wondering if I could ask, Lynda, when these vacant positions that we have, did you put in the full amount for this year? Are we likely to have some surpluses in those areas?
So for the GIS position, it's in for just six months in the budget. The community active person is in for six months in the budget. We have a planner one, just a second, which is in for six months. And then the director of planning is in the budget for eight months.
Okay, so we haven't budgeted for the full year for those. Okay, Councilor Tadman?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and through you to Mr., I almost called you Preston Manning. Sorry about that. Preston.
Call would be.
You're going to have a lot of extra work this year because of what's going on with the MBBR and the pumping station and the whole work. Is that a lot of supervision just for you? Or is somebody else going to oversee that whole project?
We have help overseeing the project.
Okay.
The bulk of the workload is internalizing our surface treatment prep. That's the bulk of the workload on staff.
Okay.
That's something that they haven't done before.
No.
No.
So further to that, so my question then is, through you to Preston again, with all the roadwork and all the other stuff, is that going to be an overload for you to supervise
We will be lacking in supervision of our crews on the job sites, because I'm a firm believer of you get what you inspect, not what you expect. So switching to more of a production-driven atmosphere, you need that supervision of the crews. You need the help organizing the crews and prepping work, ordering the materials, doing all the planning.
Can I continue for, because I'm still going to hammer about finishing this place. So you are going to get prices, so we don't necessarily need to know that for the mountain in the budget as of now, correct? And we are getting more money from the feds than the province this year than usual. We don't know exactly what we're getting at this point, do we, from the federal government?
For the gas tax, we do.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do.
Oh, I see. Well, I didn't see an amount on this last thing that we got. Do we know how much we're getting for the extra?
The additional gas tax is in the $380,000 range.
Okay, and we're getting $600,000 besides that?
Somewhere around, yeah, in the $600,000 range from the province.
Yeah.
And that's supposed to be to find efficiencies in local government. That's the deal. Although there's no specific goals or earmarks with that fund, as I understand it.
There's no specific guidelines yet, but it is supposed to be unconditional. They just want us to find efficiencies and partner, if we can, with other municipalities. They're looking for projects that are going to show some savings in our future. So perhaps it could be, you know, planning, asset management, planning, other plans that we might have on the go. So there are, you know, there are some ideas. Staff will bring back a report on that. We can't use that, though, for the types of, like, staffing for this building?
No. But I know at Quinte Access, I sit on that board, and I know that their gas tax can go towards vehicles. So we've got a lot, and I know we've tendered, but we haven't bought them yet. We've tendered them out. That's almost a, well, the gas tax alone brings us almost to a million altogether.
So the provincial gas tax funding is for transportation, and that's what Quinte Access receives. They receive Brighton's share and Quinte West's share.
I know.
The federal gas tax is different than the provincial gas tax in the guidelines that we can spend it on?
Does it say that you can't spend it on vehicles?
I will, I will look. It's, you have to provide, what's the summary we have to do at the end of the year with the gas tax funding?
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, to tell them how we improved energy, improved, you know, the rideability improves energy, that type of thing. I don't believe it has anything to do with vehicles. I've not seen it spent that way, but I'll look into it.
So just further to that, then, with Quinte Access being able to purchase vehicles, could we offset some of the costs that we pay to Quinte Access for the transit here?
With our federal gas tax?
Mm-hmm.
No, that's what our provincial gas tax does, and they receive that through Quinte West.
Yeah, I know that they do that, okay.
Okay. Can I move on to a few others?
Sure.
Okay. I saw Council Rowley, and then I'll move along to this side of the room.
I think some of my comments are the same as Councilor Tadman's regarding roadwork. Mayor, you said that all of our road projects were tendered. I was under the understanding that a lot of the extra rural ditching and improvements would be done, and that would be done in-house, a reason for getting some new equipment, I'm sure, so that our staff has time to use them. So, and I thought that the scope of the rural projects was pretty great. So there again, I'm not sure whether Public Works needs staff complement for that. I just, I hate to kind of tie the hands of our staff when they have committed to getting a lot of work done. And if we tie, we've given them equipment, we also need to give them staff to do those projects. I'd like to see that keep going.
If you want to comment on it, yes, and then I'll...
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So absolutely, we left, we left the last Committee of the Whole budget meeting with, all I left with the sense that at least one member of Council was perhaps looking for concessions, so I thought I'd throw that one out there. And it will be entirely up to Council how we move, how we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Anderson?
Yeah, I was just going to say, a week ago, we were looking for that $80,000 to be in there, and now we're taking it out. But I'll just repeat that I feel we need to give the CAO time to look at that. It's quite obvious from what I'm hearing, there's a lot of work to be done, and I'd rather be a little proactive going into this rather than sit back and have it not, jobs not get done, because we didn't have the money to, even though there might be some money coming out of reserves or whatever, I think it'll go into reserves if we don't spend it. So I think, leave it where you had it. I thought you made a good, that was your decision, Mayor. I think it was a good decision at the time, and I'll stick with it.
I think the general consensus is that we want to leave the $80,000 in, is what I'm getting? Yeah? Okay. So we're going to leave that. Go ahead, Councilor Bateman.
Just a question and a comment on, the question will be for Preston on the roads. In talking to Preston, I have complete confidence, based on what we have on the books now and what we're giving them to do it, I don't think if we gave more, and you can comment, that we'd necessarily get more, because the tenders are out. And if you tried to get more with more money, money's only part of the equation. Time is the other part, because you outsource or you contract that out, and you're not going to get anybody to do over and above. And I don't think you could do any more, even if we gave you more money, correct?
Yes, I think it's fair to say we're tapped out. I'm really limited on technical staff to help me get the tenders together and do issue, and then to follow up and inspect the work and that sort of thing. So yeah, as far as projects, between the three streets we're reconstructing, Russell, Monk, and Napier, and then the 14.9 kilometers of service treated road we have to build in Service Street, yeah, as far as projects, we're tapped out for staff, for sure.
And just to follow up, if I could. And we're talking about the $80,000, and Mr. Casman, the CAO has to do his comprehensive review, and I think we all respect that. And we've already touched on that there's money there if we had to. Could we, and to go back to the roads, our shortfall, because Public Works has what they need, they're going to be tapped out. But the real shortfall is going to be next year, because we're X number of kilometers behind. Even when we do the max this year, we're still falling behind. So could a compromise be, since the consensus was to leave the $80,000 in there, leave $40,000 in there for that position? Because it could only be a six-month position, and put the extra $40,000 into the reserves, because we're going to be short X number of kilometers. And Preston could probably speak to how many kilometers we're going to be short on the roads next year.
Okay, so I don't think, I think the $80,000 wasn't for a specific position, so it's for whatever positions come out of the review. So they aren't necessarily tied to roads, correct? Is that the understanding? Yes? Okay. And so I guess at this point, we've been doing a lot of discussing, we have a lot of things to look at yet. Is the general consensus to leave this in at this point from Council? I just want to make sure we're, okay, so I think we can move on to the next item that we want to look at, or did you have another question about that, Councilor Bateman, or...
If the consensus is to leave it in, but I don't think that's the urgency now. You're going to find the urgency with the shortfall in the roads next year, because they're going to have the tenders out earlier, and even when we get them out earlier, that's where we're going to have the shortfall of money.
Okay.
This year is the shortfall of time.
Yeah. Councilor LeBlanc, and then Councilor Tadman?
Through you, Deputy Mayor. What it is, is that we have a CAO here. We had a CAO in the past that helped us hire this one. When we did the staffing position, that CEO was here, that CAO was here, and those positions and stuff were put in with that CEO. And I understand that Mr. Casman wants to look at it. And when I based my decisions of going into this budget with this, which is my first budget, those positions were already there and to be built in, so that's why it was done. The plan was made, it was done. And right now, we're arguing on changing a plan that we had already started. So he wanted a foreman, and we needed somebody in reception, because every time I walk in, I see everybody jumping up to come to the front. So that's why I'm staying with that, because it was already done. And I know he has to review with more staff, that we're going to hire more, because we're understaffed, and he has to look at all the staffing positions that we have. But those ones were preset with the other CAO. Yeah, thank you.
Councilor Ted?
So we're still at, what is it, 3.45?
3.45.
When I looked at the paper tonight and saw, and I realized that we did go ahead and ask for the tenders for all of these, but we're going to have the brand spanking, newest-looking fleet in the whole area with all that's here. And I just wonder, I just wonder if we have to buy all of them this year? Because it just seemed, I drive a 206, it runs well. Some of these trucks don't get used that much, some do a lot. So I'm just wondering if, can we at least cut one, one of them? There's this, for the water department, I think it's $60,000 for a vehicle. I can't understand why they would need, and maybe I need somebody to explain it to me, why they need a $60,000 truck.
Okay. Just to get to that point, though, if we're buying a $60,000 truck, it's not going to be fully taxed to the taxpayer in one year, correct?
Well, definitely, the water vehicle and anything for wastewater is rate-supported, so the taxpayers are not paying for that, the ratepayers are.
Yeah.
The water and wastewater ratepayers, the users.
So that's not going to affect this tax rate?
It won't, won't change that. The rest of your vehicles that you, rolling stock that you already have approved through resolutions so that staff can put the tenders out, they were being funded through borrowing internally and repaying them over the life of the vehicle. So, you know, and $60,000 truck would last five years, so we would pay back $12,000 a year. And when we have to buy a new one, we do the same thing. And that way, we're paying for it as we use it. So you've already approved that, and that's why the tenders went in the paper.
Yes.
So to pull it back now, I think we've already gone too far down that road.
Okay. Okay. Mayor, you want to comment?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I think we have a really good, progressive, and responsible policy for the replacement of rolling stock in our community. We've been, we've been doing this for at least 15 years, probably more. And I think we are at the stage where, you know, we're in a pretty good rhythm. But I wouldn't want to see us go backward with regard to that. It's probably the one area that I've seen where we've actually kept up with that policy. We borrow internally to ensure that we have reliable vehicles so that we can offer the services to the community at the service levels we think are appropriate. So I'm not willing to pull back on a vehicle for this year.
Okay, so we're still at 3.45. Do we have other suggestions at this point that anyone wants to make as far as things that they want to change, keep the same, or add or subtract? Councilor Tadman?
This isn't necessarily saving any money, but I talked to Jim about the paving over at Ontario Street.
Mayor, can you pull your mic closer? I'm getting waving hands in the back that can't hear you. And we want to hear every word.
Who does?
We, everyone.
We'll start again. I talked to our Director of Recreation and about the paving of the road over on Ontario Street at the boat launch, and also, it's quite a mess down at the other end of my street that's municipal property. I asked him if maybe we could tar and chip both of them, and he's going to look into that instead of paving. And I don't know how much money that would save, but it could very well, I don't know.
I believe we had someone... I believe we had someone, that we already put aside last year, so I think it's 25 this year. Is that correct?
I think so, yeah.
Yes.
The other thing about that, too, is that Jim said that maybe when we do all of Harbor Street, we would use that money and pave. So, maybe, maybe, I'm talking through my hat here by saying to tar and chip. So, I'm just putting it out there. I know that Counselor LeBlanc didn't think it needed paving at all. You said that earlier tonight.
I agree with you, I would have said that.
That it doesn't need it?
No, I've been off. Through you, Deputy Mayor. We went to visit it, it doesn't need paving. What we need there is more parking. Because when the boat launch comes, and I talk to the boaters, I talk to the neighbors, and there, there's not enough parking. It's parking that's a problem. So, what you need is land. Because it's already tarred and chipped. And there's no, there's good. What you need is better docks and more space to park. Because it's already done, due to one in Gossport.
Jim, did you have any, anything you wanted to add to that, or comments about the tar and chip?
Again, I just received it five minutes before the meeting, so I really haven't had a time to even suggest it.
Yep, thank you. I, I'm not interested, I'd like to, the problem when we start taking things out and putting them aside, we end up having to, that we're adding more to another year. That's my concern. These sorts of things, we do have to keep up. It is something that's used regularly by the community, and we want to offer these things, I guess, at a level that, you know, if it has potholes and that sort of thing, that's my concern. Can we fix it, and then we're good for a long number of years. We can put things off, but then we're going to have to deal with it next year. So, that's my, my thoughts. Any other thoughts on that?
I suggested that that parking lot was fine with the last meeting, and everyone was against that, that it needed paving. Anyhow, I'm, I'm all for it now, because I think we're improving our waterfront by doing it. The docks, and, and Counselor, you've looked at the docks, and you've got that all under wraps, and I think that's good. Things are going to be improvements there, improvements with the parking lot. So, we're improving our waterfront. And maybe there's some other areas we can go there as well with some funds sometime. But this year, let's, let's do what we were planning and, and get that done. But that was part of $65,000 that I was trying to pull back, and, and some of the money going to the lighthouse and to the legion was the other part of the 15,000. I still think, I know someone made a comment that it was nickel-diming, but you might think about that one a little bit. That's all. Other than that, I think we're in pretty good shape.
Okay. Anything else on the parking lot? Any more comments? Okay. Go ahead, Counselor Bateman.
For the parking lot, it's a 25,000 out of reserve, 25,000 is off the taxpayers. I don't think that's a, when we toured it, I didn't think it was in disarray by no means. But the impact by removing $25,000 would be insignificant on what we're trying to do right now. So, to your point, we're trying to build up the waterfront. What would that work out to? What would that lower, the 3.45? It's, let's get it done, instead of putting it off to another year for lowering the tax rate by .3.
Yeah, it would be about .15. And we still have 25,000 sitting in reserve, that's going to sit there. So, why don't we get it done? Yeah, okay. Linda, go ahead.
I was just wondering if you wanted to discuss the urban infrastructure reserve fund for traffic lights, because you don't have consensus on that.
We don't have consent, okay. So, that's the other one, the urban infrastructure reserve. The suggestion was made to take the 75,000, 76,000 from the reserve instead, but we didn't get a consensus on that. Go ahead, Counselor Tadman.
It's exactly what it was earmarked for, so I would agree to take it out of the urban structure.
Yeah, I think it makes sense, yeah. Any other comments on that? Counselor Anderson, you have your light on. So, I didn't know if you wanted to comment.
Well, good.
Well, well, I guess in that case, you will, right?
So, if we don't take it out of reserve, we don't have to add another percent for reserve. I'm just talking.
Yes, you are.
You want, so if, am I correct, are, are we talking about my 1% now?
Yeah. I was, I've been waiting, I've been waiting very patiently to get to that.
I just thought, well, we're getting very close to being, I'll make a decision on this. So, I thought I just, and this is one, one last thing to talk.
So, first, I need to get a consensus on the urban infrastructure, and then we'll talk about, you just called it my 1%. So, when we call it your 1%, don't get mad at us. So, we'll talk about that next. So, the urban infrastructure, taking the traffic light costs out of that, is that everyone in agreement of that? Let me see some, okay. So, we have consensus on that now. Would you like to move on to the mayor's 1% now discussion? That's what we're going to call it. So, you get the phone calls.
Could I speak first? Because I definitely don't agree with it. So, we agree with your 1%, Mayor.
Go ahead, you can, and then I'll...
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So, I mean, I, I don't have much more to say about this. You've all heard me rant about it. I, I know that we are behind when it comes to, to infrastructure. I know that this year, we have, we're up against the clock. But 1%, 1% doesn't even help fill a drop in the bucket of what, what our deficit is in terms of our infrastructure deficit. We know, we know we should be spending another $500,000 on roads alone annually than we are this year. We're, we're doing a good job this year, no doubt. But we should be spending another $500,000 alone on roads. So, that equates to about 6.25%. I'm not, I'm not asking for 6.25%. I would never ask for 6.25% for a simple, for a reserve fund. But that's an annualized amount of money. 6.25% every single year is what we need. I'm asking for 1% so that we can start down this road of an infrastructure reserve levy that is separate from the regular levy, so that people understand what we're, we're asking for from them in terms of helping to get their roads and bridges up to speed. And this would be a fund for both urban and rural, not just the urban infrastructure reserve, which of course, we know the money came from the sale of the Public Utilities Commission back in the day. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Comments around the table on that? Counselor Rowley?
Okay. First, I'd like to ask Ms. Widerfield a question. So, now that the, the 76,000 that we just talked about, the urban infrastructure, you had already included that into the 3.45 if you got consensus, correct? Correct. Okay, excuse me. When we last left this table, looking at this budget, I got the feeling that most of us were pretty happy with being just under 5%. We were at 4.87. When we come in here today, my paper reads that I'm at 3.45. And if we add 1%, we're still less than what we were when we left a week or so ago. We would still only be at 4.45. So, I'm, I'm certainly in favor... What's that?
We'd be at 3.9. The, the global levy would only go up by .45% if we added 1%.
Well, then, we shouldn't even be talking. So, we're under 4%. So, I am certainly in favor of putting, beginning a reserve to try and catch us up with our infrastructure requirement.
Thank you. This side of the room, any comments on that? I'm going to need a consensus at one point. So, if you have comments on it, now's the time.
Okay, I'd just say, a lot of people put emphasis on percentages. It's dollars, and it's dollars we're asking the public to pay for. And, and you talk about, we may need to do $500,000 next year. Again, we're back to that same discussion, manpower, and those , the same, the same problems will be there next year. We might have $60,000 or $70,000 more to use. But, no, I think, I'm happy to leave it. I'll agree with Mary Tadman there, too, that, that we'll just leave it alone. And if there's any reserve at the end of this year, fine. So, I'm not for it.
Okay. Did you want to respond to that?
Yeah, if you don't mind. And perhaps for educational purposes, just to remind everyone that the urban roads are being paid for from reserves this year. These, these are already paid for and have been brought, projects brought forward. So, we're talking about three, almost, yeah, about 320,000, no more than that, right? Yeah, we're talking about 405, almost a million dollars, almost a million dollars of the roadwork that isn't, isn't affecting the tax base this year. Because it's, it's money that was, is being brought forward out of reserves or out of monies that had already been saved. So, keep in mind that as we move forward, you know, a million dollars of the road projects in this budget are not being funded by the taxpayer this year. Well, partially.
But the Monk, Napier, and Russell is a continuation from last year.
Right. So, so this year, it's not affecting the tax base, because we pulled the money out from last year.
Yeah.
I'm saying...
But like I said, the taxpayers have paid for it.
Exactly. But I'm saying $81,000, which is what 1% is, give or take, won't cover much next year if we, if we put it into a reserve for this year.
Good progress.
Okay. Counselor Rowley?
Thank you. Linda, if I could ask you, what would the dollar value be? What's the difference between 3.45 and 3.9 to a $300,000 home? For the year?
For the year.
So, a buck and a half a month, and we can put a little bit of money away.
Okay. Counselor Tadman, then we'll ask for...
And if, if we sharpen our pencils, we could bring it a lot lower than 3.45, because I'm not satisfied with that either, with the people that are struggling and the carbon tax now that's coming forward. I was talking to a lady yesterday, 96-years-old, rents out her farmland and doesn't get enough to pay for it as of last year. So, it's going to be that much more this year. And that's only one person, and there's a lot of people struggling. So, you talk about a few dollars here and there, but a few dollars adds up to a lot when you're, when you're living on a fixed income. No, everybody's income isn't fixed.
Counselor Bateman?
That's true. Mine has actually been decreasing over the course of the last few years, which is a bit odd, but...
Well, you're doing well now.
Okay. Counselor Bateman?
Just to touch on what Counselor Tadman says, I do agree with that point. There is some people that struggle in the cost of things, because I received a call last Tuesday, and I listened attentively and agreed with everything the young lady said, because it was my wife, so I wasn't going to argue with her, because she was mad at the cost of the, the water bill. And I said, out of my hands, take it up with council. No, I didn't. But on the, we're going back and forth on, and I'm not going to say the mayor's 1%, because we've made, it's just the 1% that's proposed. But yet, when I suggested, we have 80,000, we're going to do a comprehensive review, we may or may not need even, need that money this year, that's 1%. So, we're saying no to moving that over. And then 15 minutes later, we're talking about putting another $80,000, which is 1% over in there. So, why don't we just earmark that $80,000 that we're most likely not going to use? And if we do need some, the mayor has already stated that there's money in there to fill positions.
Any thoughts and comments on that suggestion? Counselor LeBlanc?
Through you, Deputy Mayor, for, this raise, when I looked at the raise of 4.87 and the raise of the, the tax rate of 3.45, is that still the same amount as it was 700 and some 1,000 dollars for this year? When I looked at it on the thing, the raise in taxes?
So, the paper that I gave you last week, where it was 4.87%?
Yes.
You had reduced it by $80,000 for the, taking it out of the contingency for sidewalks.
So, it brings it to 600 and some 1,000.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And then, and then we, just bear with me a second, I'm going to see where we were at the end of last meeting. The only difference between that 4.87 and the 3.45 was that the education rate went down and that the county levy...
Went down?
Yes. And that, that created your, your tax room, so to speak, in the blended rate.
Okay. So, I'm not in favor of 1%. I'm happy with the raise that we're doing on the...
Okay. So, what's the general consensus on the 1%? Just a show of hands if people are in favor, because I'm all over the place. You don't count. Okay. So, it looks like the majority are not in favor?
Can I just ask one follow-up question?
Sure.
Before we make a decision on the 80,000 that's allocated for a position that we might not use this budget...
We already made that decision.
Okay, then I'm confused on why we're debating 80,000 for 1% when we're going to set 80,000 that we know we're not going to use.
It's two different items, really. We're, we're setting the 80,000 in a reserve for roads, so we have it when we need it. The positions, we're not sure what's going to happen, and we're looking to put money in, aside, so that we have the money if we decide on those positions. That's, that's the idea behind each. Those in favor of the 1%? Okay, so we did not get a consensus on that, so. Okay, so we are still at, no, that puts us at the 3.45 still. Anything else? Are we, are we done? Okay.
Through you, Deputy Mayor. If we're going for a vote, I'd like to have a recorded vote.
Yep. Does someone want to make a recommendation to council at this point? That we, that we make a recommendation to council that we accept the budget?
I'm making a recommendation that we accept the budget, as, as is.
I'll second it.
With the tax levy of?
With the tax levy of the...
3.?
8,712,842. I'll wait till Candace is ready, I'll say it again.
Okay.
Yeah.
Recommendation to council for a levy?
Um, tax levy of, for a tax levy of eight, sorry, 8,712,842. 712842.
We have a move, need a mover and a seconder? Moved by Counselor LeBlanc, seconded by Counselor Anderson? Yeah?
I'll ask for a recorded vote.
That's entirely up to the deputy mayor, but I would disagree. All the procedures for committee of the whole are the same for council. Because we are, we are, although we're meeting as committee of the whole, it is a council meeting.
Okay. So, this is by Counselor LeBlanc, seconded by Counselor Anderson, that the committee makes a recommendation to council of a tax levy of 8,712,000, right? No, 842. Right? Yeah. And we will start with Counselor Doug LeBlanc.
Yes.
Counselor Emily Rowley?
I'm going to say no, because I wish it was higher.
Okay. Counselor Mary Tadman?
No.
Deputy Mayor Laura Vink?
Yes.
Mayor Brian Osterdahl? Counselor Ron Anderson?
Yes.
Counselor Mark Bateman?
Yes.
And that's carried.
Okay, so that concludes our budget deliberations. Everyone can let out a cheer now. Yay. And do we have a question period? Yes. So, next, we... we have question period? Yes. So next, we, order? Yeah, really. Where's my hammer? Give me the hammer. There we go. Next, we have question period. Is there anyone here that has questions? Anyone from the public that has questions for council at this time? And appears that we do not, oh, he's just moving slow.
There's your chair.
Bring your own chair.
David Green, I think you've just made a incorrect and weak-kneed decision. I would love to take on the wrath of councillor Tadman, that's not a problem. I firmly believe, and we were at the back suggesting that 1% was a good start and 2% wouldn't hurt, go with a straight 5% and put the difference in the fund. You haven't helped yourself. And we haven't helped this town, and we have not made the infrastructure investment that we were all expecting and that some of you campaigned on. Not sure why you ca, there's my question for today. Why did you cave?
Thank you. And thank you for posing a question at the end. I appreciate that. Anyone else at this point? Was he, does he want an answer from members of council? He did.
What are you looking for, sir?
I was okay with 4.87.
Oh, you were talking percent. What were you looking for?
I was okay with 4.87.
So we're talking percentages?
Yes.
Okay, so I was talking, we discussed the public works and how much work they could get done with what they have to work with. We talked about not having our staff in place. That is what we campaigned on. I know I did. We need to get staff in place. We haven't got it all in place. A study is being done, and I'll respect that. I think that'll be forthcoming pretty darn soon, so we can move on it. But for this council to make a decision based on what we've got to work with, I think the real question, and maybe the item that may have concerned you the most was the fact that we didn't go with the reserve. The mayor had a good idea, I just didn't agree with it. As far as putting more percent or two more into bringing up to five. I've never been a big one to manage by percentages. I manage by results, and I manage by, when you have the money, you can, where are you going to put it and what results are you going to get from it? And I think this council has put a lot of thought in, an awful lot of thought into this. We've talked to ourselves, each other, to make sure that we're spending the money wisely and we're not, we're not going, going to go overboard and move too quickly. But I think we're moving fairly quick as compared to other councils, so I'm happy with what we've done.
This was also the opportunity to put money away for next year. And I understand the pushes and pulls on staff, and we're talking about next year. And one would hope that our staff position and our staff complement and the management that we need to run this town would be in place by that time. So we were looking to fund for the future, not fund for yesterday.
Well, it's a good, it's a good point, but I didn't decide that, so.
Councillor Raymond, did you want to add something?
Yes, please. I'm going to direct it to Linda Widerfield, and then she can clarify it for us.
This question period?
Yes. Okay, for David Green, so, and I'll let Linda correct me if I'm wrong, then. I think currently, in the budget, it's allocated, and my math might be wrong, but we have 1.6% going into reserves for public works this year. There's 130,000 allocated to reserves already, so the 1% would have taken a 2.6. And if I'm wrong, Linda will correct me. It's different.
Did you want to add something, mayor?
Thank you, deputy mayor. Is this my opportunity to answer the question or just to?
This is question period. We're supposed to be answering the question of the citizen that's come forward.
So I will do that.
Not a debate topic.
I will do that.
Thank you.
I think the question is, why did, why did we cave? And I can, I would concur. I think, certainly I was proposing the 1%, and yet I voted in favor of the 3.45. I saw what council wanted to do, and I support council, Mr. Green. I think you know that.
Understood.
That's my job, and I will do that as best I can here and in the community. So when only councillor Rowley and I were in support of the 1% infrastructure levy, which I think, which I still think is a progressive and wise thing to do, and I will continue to pitch it over and over again for the next four years, or three budgets, the next three budgets anyway, maybe next year I'll advocate for 2% since I didn't get my 1% this year. But the reason I caved and voted in favor of the 3.45 global tax rate is entirely to support council's decision to move forward with the budget.
We've had fractured decisions before, and I respect that part of the decision, but I know it was in angst, because we're not, we're not getting our message out to those that can make a difference. And we're talking at less than $20 a month, I'm sorry, $20 a year to start this fund. And I know that if we had not voted in favor of the budget, and I've sat for the last eight years and watched this harangue go on, and I'm glad that we have moved forward, I'm just saying, we moved forward with the wrong amount.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Green.
No, I want to answer.
Go ahead, councillor LeBlanc.
Through you, deputy mayor, to Mr. Green. I do not cave on anything. I'll let you know that, I'll let you know that right now. The thing is, this is the largest tax increase this town has seen. If you go back 10 years, there was one six years ago. Most of the average now, the tax increase per year's were around 220,000 to 215,000 per year, on the average, if I read these things right. This one was close to 700,000. Next year, we don't have to buy a $400,000 loader, we don't have to buy a $250,000 front-end loader. That money's all in here to go with, to go with it. So it's a nice increase to go. And next year, if we get, if we get to build some stuff, and he wants his 2%, I'll be with him. But this year, you got the carbon tax, you got a whole bunch of other taxes, hydro going up on people, and this tax rate is high. I was happy with 4.8, but then the millerate changed with the school and with, and with the county. I have an issue with what we give the county, a 7.8 million, 7.1 million dollars per year. So if I read it right, and that's where it is, don't cave. This is the largest increase that they've had. And that's where it is. It'll help us out, and we're catching on infrastructure, we're borrowing, and we still got a large reserve. We still got a large borrowing capacity. We got stuff that we can go, but we also need staff. And we got to address the staff, and all staff, and everything that has to be done. So when I looked at the decision to do it, it was on a global picture, on everything that we're doing and what's going to happen next year, from what I go through these numbers and how I look at it. And I'm sorry, it wasn't where we wanted to be. I would like to have more, but you can only afford so much. And this year is my first year doing this. Next year, it'll be a different year. It may be lower, it may be higher. And we look at what we got to do. And we'll see how much gets done on all the sidewalks, the roads, and everything is done. I just hope that that young man that we have hired, we haven't set him up for failure with all the work that we give him without a supervisor and a foreman. So, and that's the problem that we've got. So that's where I am. I do not cave. I look at everything very seriously when I do, when I make a decision. I'm a businessman. I run this like a business. I look at it. I know we need more money, and you need more people, because we're understaffed. How do we get there? We can't get there overnight. It's going to be a four-year process. And in four years, if you don't like me, don't vote for me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other citizens that would like to, or anyone would like to ask a question at this time before the chair goes? Chair's gone, too bad. Okay.
A comment, maybe it won't be the final comment. I will remind council and staff and the public that the CAO has committed to providing us with an infrastructure study that will show us what our deficit is. I'm sure the CAO will, will work with our senior staff to get there. And I suspect that 1% will look like a drop in the bucket.
Okay, thank you. Laura?
Thank you. Question period? Yes, I'm asking a question. Please, thank you.
Why not? I got an extra half hour.
It's early. We've only been here an hour. My question, my question is, and this is just about process, this recommendation will come to the next council meeting, is my guess. Will there then still be opportunity to deliberate?
I would suggest that the answer is no, because it will come, the next time we see it, it will come as a bylaw, will it not? What we've done essentially is recommending to council to set the tax levy.
Right.
So it will come as a bylaw to do so. So, yeah, the answer is, of course, there's always opportunity to debate, deliberate.
Vote again.
We can vote against, we can refer it back to staff, you can refer it back to committee of the whole, we can do whatever we want.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Okay, are we, are we all good? I have a motion, moved by councillor Rowley and seconded by councillor Tadman, that the April 10, 2019 Committee of the Whole Budget Meeting adjourn at 7:29 PM. All in favor?